It is 6:30. I'll call this meeting for the zoning board of appeals down to order. First order of business this evening is to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything under, any, or anything?
No.
We'll get right into our appointments. New business. First case is actually a continuation, case 2022.09.20A, continuation of the case of James Maderas, 41 Tabor Street, behaving mass petitioning the board for variance to be able to construct a storage building to house equipment and supplies at map 15 lot 7A Anthony Street. This request is being made under the provisions of 332 BV, District B Development Standards, 7 Municipal Water and Sewer, conform to Mass Title V and Minimum Land Area. Mr. Maderas here?
Yes.
I know we left you last week and basically wanted something from the Board of Health if we were even to consider this.
Right. Yeah, I received a letter, just on Friday, actually.
So, dear members of the board, I've reviewed the set case and as long as there is no water service to the proposed storage building, this office does not have any issues with the proposal. So if he has no water coming in, he doesn't have an issue with no septic going out and him constructing a proposed storage building 30 by 68. The only thing I look at is that if he were ever to, he's not covering the area where he could put a septic or tie in. And again, the building is all pushed to one side of the lot, leaving plenty of room, so... I don't know what you guys want to do with it matter, but we did ask for a letter from the board and it seems that the Board of Health is okay with the construction of a storage facility without... Question? A butter here? Yes.
Yeah, I understand. My great-grandfather built the house across the street. We've had businesses around us forever. And I understand it might even look better if he builds a building, put all the junk that's in there.
Sure.
But I don't understand how the Board of Health can even approve a building where men come every day at the beginning of their shift, go out or on the road, working, come back, and don't have a place to relieve themselves. It's a basic human need. It's basic sanitation. And I...
I don't disagree with you. That's why we asked the Board of Health to get involved.
And again, the workers are there for, you know, five minutes in the morning, five minutes in the afternoon. And the junk she's referring to is very expensive construction equipment that has been somewhat rusted due to the fact that it's been outdoors for the past five years.
I'm just gonna ask you to let her finish.
Sure.
As I said, I understand the business and I think the building might improve, but to remember that there's houses, families surrounding the whole place. And the lack of a sanitary place is just unthinkable to me. It's a, it's a business. What business would not have a bathroom for its employees? I don't care if they're there for five minutes. They're coming and going in the morning and at night.
Sure.
And a business does not mean it can be a dumping ground or a septic pool, you know? And I, I am a registered nurse for a long time, so I understand that, how people operate. You know, and it's...
Again, our business is located on 10 North Sixth Street in downtown New Bedford. This is a storage facility. There isn't no action going on here. The activity that consists now...
Don't your guys every morning pull up there with vehicles and leave in other vehicles?
They come in with coffees and they're out. They're, they're really, they're picking up tools out of the storage container that's on the property now, hooking up a mixer and they move on to the local... You know, we have accounts here at Parting Ways, Snoko. So they go, they, they tend to go off to those places. They, you know, they're fresh out of bed, half hour out of bed, you know, they, I think...
So I have a quick question as far as... So what, right now, that's not gonna change. The business is there now and it's not gonna change after tonight. So is there like a porta potty or anything that you put in the property?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to putting one, but I would ask first for permission. I never put one there because it's really never been a need. You know, it's, it's come down to, you know, the, the activity that's there consists of, you know, 20 minutes to a half hour a day at most.
And I would, I would just ask that if you do approve it without a regular bathroom, that you condition it with a porta potty.
I was gonna ask, do your, are your concerns alleviated if we mandate one in the, in the variance?
Yes.
Okay.
And at least it doesn't, the door opens to the business and not to the families and houses.
Sure, in the back of the building. I understand that, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Could you say your name, address?
I'm sorry, it's Julie Hillier, H.I.L.L.I.E.R. And I am one of the property owners of 5 Anthony Street, Kuschna. It's, might still be under my mom's name, Florence Marshall.
Thank you. Are there any other butters or anybody who wants to speak for or against it? Does the board want any more information before...
I have a quick question too on the fence. I would get it quick. It looks like it's a chain fence around it.
That's right.
So is there a concern with like having a, putting up a solid fence on one side? Is she on the left side of your property?
She's facing it.
In front of us.
Across the street?
Yes. Yes, Mrs. Marshall, who, yeah, I've, I've had a few runs in, run ins with your mom. She's a very nice lady, actually. I, yeah.
She's passed and she lived there. Her mother lived there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, who, who, was, you know, who, you know, who she was at the time. But yeah, I believe her brother is there now. Tom?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm the son, David's son.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
If, if the board doesn't have any questions, I'd like to just add my opinion for whatever you guys think. Again, the neighbors are very nice in saying that they don't mind this if there is a stipulation of a permanent portage on, put on the site. It looks like, you know, the building is there and we got some kind of area, you know, around the back or side of this building where it could be located. I would suggest that if you do want to do it, we add some kind of stipulation like that. So it sounds good. Again, take both, both sides of allowing this, but taking care of the concerns of the neighborhood. Again, that's why we continued it last week because we have concerns ourselves about it. Board of Health, I understand, you know, with no water in, they're thinking no water out. But I, I do believe what the neighbor's saying that, again, these guys are fresh out of bed. They stop, they have their coffee, then they, they got a place and now they got a building there. So it just makes sense that there might be some buddy trying to relieve themselves. You guys wanna put it to a vote or you wanna go?
Let me get the motion. Just to play that in.
Yeah.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor to allow the proposed storage building, 68 by 30, at map 15 lot 12 Anthony Street. As long as the petitioner agrees to have and pump regularly a portage on for the use of his guys coming in and going.
A tour.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I want to thank the board. I want to thank the butters. Thank you.
Just gonna get the minutes of the neighborhood paperwork and we'll move on to the next case. All right. Case B, case 2022.10.18A, case of Taylor Martin of Westport, who is petitioning the board for variance to be able to demolish and reconstruct a single family dwelling at 15 Catherine Street. This request is being made under the provisions of Article 8, Section 331E Development Standards. Is Taylor Martin or Representative here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave DeVigne from Schneider DeVigne Leoni, representing the applicant owner of the property, Taylor Martin. I have packets for anybody that doesn't have one. Is everybody bored all around? I'm gonna follow through, kind of follow, go through the packet, which essentially is, is the presentation. So Mr. Martin is the owner of the property. According to the assessors, has an address of 15 Catherine Street. I'd like to go through first some history of the property. In your packets, there are several survey plans that you will see. This property was originally developed as a larger piece. It's actually, this case is somewhat connected to the next case. And the history will, will show why. Back in November 14, November 16, 1949, the original lots were created as lots 25 through 31. So there's an exhibit in your packet which shows that that subdivision plan, it's actually a, I believe, a land court plan, which showed the lots which are but the reservoir as lots 25 through 31. That was when the lots were originally developed. Sometime between that plan in 1949 and 1955, the houses were built. We're not sure about the exact dates, but the next land court plan that I show you is from 1955, which shows the lots being renumbered 16 through 22. And it shows the two structures as they pretty much exist today. This structure being on lot 18 on that land court plan. And the next case, which is the other dwelling being located on lot 19 on that land court plan. So in Massachusetts, lots are considered merged for zoning purposes, for assessment purposes if they're undersized. So the assessor's maps showed all those lots combined as one. So for decades, we had a situation where we had two dwellings on one lawn, which actually violates zoning. You couldn't do that on a new construction if you wanted to. Now in 2020, the next exhibit, September 24th, 2020, you'll see there's a, a plan that's endorsed by the Christian Planning Board, which subdivided the lots. They were called out as lots 23 and 24 in this plan. And the, the reason the planning board was able to sign the plan is Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81L, allows the division of a property with two buildings that predate the subdivision control law. If you notice in the upper right-hand corner where there's a planning board block and a signature, right below there, there's a notation that the dwellings existed prior to 1955 and are, as shown on our land court plan, so we have proof of a plan of record stamped by a land surveyor, which allows the lot to be developed. When the lots are developed, they don't have to be exactly equal. It allows for a balance as best you can. So as you can see, the lots were divided in sort of an odd fashion, whereas lot 24 took the first dwelling and situated it towards the left. And the next lot kind of wraps around it and that's because there's only two, there's only simply one location on the whole property to do perk tests and actually put in a septic system in compliance with Title V of the state sanitary code, which is up in the northeast quadrant of the property. So the planning board signed that plan. The next step actually, because it's a land court property, is to send it to the land court. And the land court then proceeded to approve and issue a decree plan, they call it, which finalized that lot division. So once the planning board approved it, the land court approved it. So the, the other exhibit that you have in your packets are a septic system, a large-scale septic plant, which I show here on the board. The orange highlighted area depicts the existing dwelling, which is currently non-conforming towards Catherine Street. The yellow indicates a proposed house on this lot, proposed to be 28 by 38. Showing one, one stall garage off to the, I guess, the northerly side, a front porch and a rear deck and the septic system located just off to the upper, towards Catherine Street, off to the left of the house. A new well would be put in and that's what this dog leg is for, so that well can be put on the site and the 100-foot radius can be maintained between the septic system and the well. So the redevelopment and reconfiguration of the lot lines was completely surrounded by, or was driven by the, the septic and the wells. Currently, there are some sort of septic pool on site for the dwellings and I think they're serviced by one law, one well. So that well will be abandoned, the septic should be abandoned, filled in. Two new wells will be put in and they both would have Title V compliant septic systems. The green on this plan indicates the wetland line, which was approved by the Conservation Commission. And the, the pink outline depicts this subject property that we're talking about for this, this case. The balance of the property wraps around it and has a distinct land court line, which divides the sou, the westerly part of the property and the reservoir. So the existing conditions are we have two dwellings or prior to the division, two dwellings on one lot, which is a non-conforming situation. Both dwellings are non-conforming towards the street. Now, the other key to the proposal before you is the new dwelling that will go off, will meet all the zoning setbacks. It'll be pushed off the street so that it meets a minimum 25-foot setback towards the street. It's actually showing as 27 feet to the front porch. That's if they elect to build a front porch. At least they'll have room for a small stoop and steps. We meet the side setback, 15-foot minimum, it's shown as 16. And we meet the rear setback, which is 20 feet, and it's shown as 21 feet. So the new house will actually meet all of the zoning setbacks. So the reason we're here is even though Mass General Law allows this kind of subdivision of a property and in this contorted way, it doesn't alleviate zoning altogether. You still need to meet zoning. So we meet zoning with the setbacks by re-dividing the lots so we don't meet certain criteria within the zoning bylaws, which requires a minimum lot area of 60,000 square feet. I don't think there's a lot in the neighborhood that has that. So the variance for that, this lot, needs a variance of 46,637 for the lot area. Buildable upland area, we have a minimum requirement of 40,000 square feet on the new lot. A variance is required for 26,637 square feet. And then part of our zoning bylaws, you have to create, when you create a brand-new lot, raw land, let's just say, Perry Hill Road, see a bunch of new houses being built. Every lot has 150 feet of frontage. You also have to have a shape factor. At that 150-foot width at the street, it has to go back at least 150 feet in depth. So you create a box width and depth of 150 by 150. Nearly impossible in this neighborhood because all the lots are so small. So we need a variance for a lot width from 10 feet. We have 140 feet total width, we need 150. And the lot depth, a variance of 60 feet because we, we simply don't have 150 feet in depth. We believe it meets all the criteria for a variance soil conditions. There's a well in marsh off to the back, which limits the lot area and creates a contorted shaped lot. The shape of the lot, it's, it's long and narrow due to the original land court division of the law and creation of the law. And the soil conditions, which are core in the back where the wellens are, forces us to put the septics in the wells, the only location that we can put them, which is what, how we created the lot. So it's, it's a unique situation where Mass General Law allows you to subdivide the property, which we did. The owner, Taylor Martin, actually sold the other lot. He still owns this lot, which he has every right to do. But technically, we're stuck in the conundrum of being in that position where somebody building new, new subdivision, new A and R lots up in the north part of town where it's easy to do, we can't do that because we live in a neighborhood that's congested and tight and limited lot size. So it's a technicality and there is case law on it. I think Mr. Merritt pointed it out and that's why we're here. So we're here requesting those variances. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I should mention, the plan you see on the board has been approved by the Conservation Commission. There is, there is an active order of conditions for the work to be done. The plan has been approved, as I said, by the planning board. Plan's been approved by land court. Plan's been approved by the Board of Health. This is our last step in somebody being able to go for a building permit. So that is the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any butters or anybody else wants to speak on it?
I'm gonna guess.
If you could come up and give your name and address, please.
Come up. My name's Alexandra Barnes. I live at Fort Catherine Street, which is directly across the street from these two lots that we're talking about. So my main concern with the two lots being put in is that, as we mentioned, they're undersized. So I'm worried about, you know, like if you go down this road, it's a dirt road, private. It's very wet. The wetlands are right there. We did not need flood insurance when we first moved into the house about three years ago. Then we were forced to get it because things were redistributed, FEMA said we needed it. So I'm just concerned about the drainage situation. Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm concerned about the drainage. I'm concerned about the sizes and just the general, you know, the feel of the neighborhood. It's like a really small, private neighborhood. Also, because we're a private street, the town does not care for our roads or anything. So we're on the hook for any costs. We were told that we're gonna need a new telephone poles shortly. So I just wanted to make it known to people who are planning to build down there that that's also going to apply to them as well. So I think that's it.
Thank you.
If I may, just... Prior to the Conservation Commission approval, when we did the public hearings, there were concerns that were raised about some ponding of water in the roadway. And in the conservation permit, there's a, a plan, a small-scale plan that they attach to the permit. And there are two drains proposed on both lots to transmission any water from Catherine Street to the, to the rear of the site. Everywhere else, the water will shed away from Catherine Street. But for that area, you know, that, the front of the houses, which were drained towards Catherine Street, two drains are required to be put in.
So those are, sorry, those are gonna drain towards Catherine Street?
Uh, no, away from Catherine.
Away, okay.
They'll be placed right at the intersection of Catherine and I think it's David. And, and they'll be directed and sloped away from the intersection.
What, to David Street?
No, from David Street away towards the swamp.
Towards the house you're building?
No.
Toward the wetlands?
Towards the wellens. Between the two houses, there'll be subsurface drains. You won't see them except for the entry of the drains and they'll direct the water off to the rear.
Can you drain into the wetlands?
It's not directly into the wellens, no.
They're gonna go through, put pipes in and put cleaners and put this stuff and, you know? So I'll talk. I don't hear anybody else. I mean, you know, you're talking...
You said the board, the planning board approved that.
The drains?
The planning board approved any, any, I was told by the planning board a few years back. There any work to be done down there, like any new development, any new houses, that road had to be fixed.
Okay, see...
I know those were the problem in the beginning of the, of the Keen Road.
I'll stop you there and just say there's two, and I'm not gonna call them dwellings because that's where you and I are differing on this. Them, house, them camps are not dwellings.
Correct.
Yes.
The camps are not dwellings. And therefore, you know, thinking that we can put one there, I think is a big reach. But that's just my opinion. The planning board has to approve a subdivision when there's two buildings on a lot. If they're considering them, you know, separately owned or want to consider them separately owned. Back before zoning, you were able to build multiple houses on a lot. And if that's the case and you owned one, they gotta be able to let you, you know, separate them into multiple parcels. So that's what they did here. But they did that so that they could separate these two camps. They're camps built on cinder blocks. They're by no means year-round dwellings. I wanted to get that out so everybody who has never been down there realizes that these were never intended to be year-round homes. Back in the day when the reservoir, Lake Street, was a nice little pond and you could go swimming and do that. This was a summer cottage that people could go and store their stuff in while they went to take a swim. Again, it's a private road. It's not plowed. It's not this. It's not that. So to allow, you know, I don't, I haven't really looked at the dwellings, whether they're, you know... We don't have a plan for dwelling, actually. We have that. They're gonna put a, a one-bedroom dwelling. But to think that, you know, a year-round residence is the same as one of these camps is a stretch. So this lot is 13,000 square feet again in this area. And you can build on 10,000 square foot because you can get your drainage and your, your everything else. This particular one, Dave, is the smaller of the two. And it looks like you're over digged and your stuff is actually on the other lot as well?
No, not the over dig.
You got lines that cross. Why?
The over dig is the shaded line right here. It's, you get the...
Why does your septic design or drawing show it?
Is it raised?
There's grading. There's grading. It's gonna be feathered between the two lots. You're gonna create a V to allow water to flow through from the road.
They literally have to put dirt on the other guy's lot in order to make this work.
That's correct. So... Without a retaining wall, I mean, there are other ways to do it.
So will that grading create some of that water to flow towards where we live, where at Fort Catherine?
So we've already been told that the front of the house is, are gonna pitch and drain towards the road and then that there'll be drainage on the road to take it back outside.
The idea of the septics, they're side by side and they're gonna be built into the hillside. But they're gonna have a V in the middle so the water comes off the road and still flows where it goes now.
Can I ask a question? How many square foot are we under? He's looking for a variant?
Um, 45,000, 46,637. The minimal lot size in Kuschna is now 60,000 square feet and this lot is 13,363.
So this could potentially bring anyone else who has a small lot saying, hey, listen, you're allowed in there, let's allow... you allowed it there, let's allow it here, let's allow this, let's allow that, and it's gonna, it could start a chain.
Only if they have existing structures and they can subdivide the property in the same situation. It's not, you know, it's not an open, it does not open the floodgates for anybody else.
You're right, and his answer is also correct. When you do allow this sort of thing, you do set precedent. The precedent also does have what he's saying, an existing structure already there. But again, I wanna use it as an existing structure, not an existing dwelling.
I will point out, too, that whether it's a seasonal structure, that it's still, you know, people can, it has a bathroom, has a kitchen, has sleeping quarters, it's a dwelling. It may not be a full year-round dwelling, but at some point in time, when you go to all the beach communities or a community such as this, the cottages turn into full year-round residences.
My issue is more of the, you know, now you have, you potentially have three or four more cars down a private road in the winter. You know, in the summer, it's a different story. It really is. You're talking about two months versus 12, so.
I'd like to say one more thing. My mother-in-law has lived down that road all her life.
If you wanna share, we need to.
My name is James Souza. My mother-in-law, Cheryl Hathaway. Her father is the one who purchased Fort Carroll Street. Her uncle purchased another one on Carroll Street. They've been down there whole lives, down that road. She still lives there today. Those houses never had bathrooms in the house. They had outhouses, and it was dug in, holes in the ground, literally outhouse, half a moon on the door. They never had bathrooms back then. It was an outhouse. So I just wanted to make that clear, that they never had a bathroom in there. They were just a place, like you said, to go there, go hang out for the day, maybe spend the night, but it wasn't to live there. It was never a dwelling. They were always just a camp.
Can I just ask how big these houses are gonna be? There's gonna be two houses put up on these lots, and how big are they gonna be?
We don't actually have a proposal.
Because, you know, if you're gonna okay this, I'm gonna.
I have proposal of a one-bedroom, but there is no house plan.
And are these two stories, are they, Kate, what are they, cakes? Like, we're left in the dark here. Before you know it, the houses are up and it's too late.
The maximum house size that can go on the site is shown on the plan.
28 by 38, two-bedroom dwelling with a 14 by 22 garage, added 12 by 16 deck on the front, and it's got a complete covered porch on the front.
So it's 1,064 square feet. You'd be stipulated in the balance.
So you got a house with two car garages and then another dwelling coming up?
Okay, this one.
Is that what we're saying?
This one's a single car garage?
Yes. Okay. I apologize, I do have another plan showing a 28 by 38, two-bedroom dwelling, garage in depth on the other plan.
I think there's a lot of square footage being asked to be given.
Now, these raised septic systems?
Yes.
Obviously, they're raised septic systems.
Yes, they're bringing in filter grade amount, yes.
They blend into the hillside, but that hill was apparently, it looks to me, cut off of gravel.
Yeah, they, they, they're not, they're not way up from the topography, no. They're, what's existing there now and what they're gonna bring around is just kinda keeping the water off the top of it.
And I'd just like to point out, too, if you look at any of the Land Court plans, you can see that most of the property down there are small.
Understood.
They're, you know, this.
There also aren't too many, you know, 50-foot buildings down there.
Well, right across the street, there's a two-story colonial.
There is one.
Built about 10 years ago. And the colonial is.
Well, that's why we're here, 'cause that happened.
Does the board need any more information? Is there anybody who'd like to move this one direction or another?
They might make a motion to approve the variance as that's presented.
We have a motion to approve the variance. I don't hear a second.
Oh, second. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance. I will call for a vote. All in favor? We have three fall. Those are posts. Three to two.
How's your voting? I think it's a lot of square footage that's asking to be given away.
I agree, and that's why I voted it down.
46,000.
The other, there's, we got a case writing coming up next, next door to where, there's 40,000 square feet. That one may be different. But I think it's a very small lot to put that much home on in a wet area like that, and we have a vote. You can stay right there, Davis. We're gonna bring your next case up. I believe you're gonna speak on that one as well. It's our case 2022, 1018B. Case of Timothy Breton, 55 Pleasant Street, petitioning the board for a variance to be able to demolish and reconstruct a single-family dwelling located at 19 Catherine Street. Request being made under the provisions of Article 8, Sections 3, 3, 1E, Development Standards. Your honor.
Thank you. For the record, the victim representing Timothy Breton is the owner of the property. It's essentially the same presentation as the last project, but different variance numbers. The minimum lot area of 60,000, we need a variance of 18,900 square feet. Buildable upland area is short 5,025 square feet from 40,000. And he has the lot width, but the depth is short 30 feet from the 150-foot. It's proposed, I think it's 28 by 40, three-bedroom house, septic system located up in the, up on the hillside, and the effluent will be pumped up through a strip in the back of the property up to that point. So the total lot area of this parcel is 41,100 square feet, and it has 205 feet of frontage Again, it was a part of the other property, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's the same exact presentation.
Again, this is similar neighborhood. This lot is 40,000 square feet. Definitely larger than most of the lots in that area, and, you know, has the room for dwelling septic, well, everything you need. But I'm gonna ask you, buddies, because this is a separate case.
How many square foot are Charlie?
Sorry?
How many square foot are they shot?
1,600.
There you go.
But the house is a lot bigger. It's a three-bedroom.
It is a three-bedroom.
And it's bigger than the last?
28 by 40 with a 24 by 24 garage, regular full-size dwelling.
So even though.
Again, a 40,000 square foot is, take, drive-through reservoir estates where you have all nice big homes in there, and every lot in there is 30,000 square feet. So 40,000 square foot is a really nice-sized lot, talking about just under an eight-bedroom.
But it is a bigger house.
Same size, one more bedroom.
Two-story?
Yes, ma'am.
The house, including the porches and the garage, occupies 5% of the lot.
5%. Anybody else wanna add anything? Can you make a motion?
Make a motion, we approve this presented.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve this lot with a variance of 18,900 square feet. They do meet all the other setbacks necessary, Dave, right? Just like the other one, looks like everything's.
That's correct.
Good with setbacks. The only variance you're asking for is, actually, you're looking for a buildable, oh, because of the 45,000 square feet, yeah, so. So we do, we do have our three variances to vote on this. You've gotta approve the 18,900 square feet. Supposed to have 45,000 square foot of upland, and they are short 5,000. And the lot depth, again, that 150 by 150 that David discussed, there is 30-foot variance required. I'm gonna let you speak.
Just one point of order, Mr.?
She's got her hand. One second, please.
So as you mentioned about the road being fixed before this happens, would it be fair for maybe us as a neighborhood group to like get together and ask for the road to be fixed, like either before or when this happens or something?
I'd be up to the group.
I don't think that's something that we can get involved with. I mean, I don't know how the deeds work over there, if you have an association, if you all just voluntarily pitch in, or if you have to chase people at it, but it's really not something that this board can dictate.
So we should create an association, probably.
So you wanted to say something else, Dave?
Just that the, if you look at page two of the packet, Mr. Merritt, it's a buildable upland 40,000, not 45.
Okay, I didn't put, buildable upland.
That's, that's an email from Mr. Merritt.
I didn't write this application. I don't know if you did or someone else, but it's saying a variance of 5,025 square feet is required.
Correct. It, that's short, right, that's short from 40,000.
From 40,000.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it, please.
So again, I just wanna be clear that your motion was to grant the variances, all three of them.
Yes.
Right, and a second. And we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Since it was a three to two vote on the first one, what happens there?
I believe that's the night.
Tonight.
Okay. Okay, right on to our next and final case for this evening. Case 2022, 1018C. Case of Robert, C. Roberts, 15 Oliver Street, Dehaven, petitioning the board to be able to construct five single-family, one-level dwellings for 55 and older housing at Garfield and Hayes Street, about 15 watt. 372, this request is being made under the provisions of Section 3, 3, 4E. Mr. Rogers?
O'Neil.
Very good.
So I own this property in Garfield and Hayes for seven, eight years. I went to the building department back in 2019 to speak with them about this, actually, he's the one that brought it to my attention, that this village zoning had been put in place with this old 55, and that I qualified on, at this location. With COVID set in, we really kinda just put everything at a halt. He told me what I needed to do. We waited a few years for this COVID thing. I met with the sewer and water department, walked through the, there's water and sewer availability on the road. Told me I needed to get a site layout plan showing the dwellings and a rendering of the drawings that, what I was gonna propose there. So I did all that. Went to the, went to the town planner, spoke with the town planner, spoke with the head of a Krishna Day, the clerk, I don't know Pam, I don't know if she is there. And, you know, they're in favor of what I'm trying to do there, and it fits the, it fits the need for this style housing to be placed there. So I presented what I needed to present, and I'm here now to answer any questions that you may have. It's kinda new to me, what this was all about, but this was kinda brought to my attention and the town needing some, some of this style housing. I believe we have some multiple family or, I don't know, it's an apartment building that's across the street from me on Garfield Street, and it's commercial property right on the side of me on Hayes and, Hayes and Garfield. I don't know what else to say about that, so I've applied for the variance, the special permit I needed, and the variance that would be followed with that.
Do you, in, in the packet, we've got some nice drawings. I don't have any measurements.
So on the back of those drawings, there's not, right there, doesn't that page show you the, doesn't that show you the layout of that box?
This one? This one I have. This, this one I have, um, you know, gives me a couple of measurements about twenty-foot setbacks and stuff. My, my real concern is how far off of Main Street, or South Main Street this is. Well, um, the, I'll be honest, at fifty-five, this is the first time we've taken up a fifty-five and over, so I just wanted to make sure it was all good. I mean, I'm, I'm totally far, I think it's a great thing for town, but the only place I could find it is in, as you said, the Business Village. But the Business Village is only three hundred feet off of Main Street, and it, it seems like you're well over that.
Well, we're in the residential section, which this falls under, this falls under the residential side of it, not in the, not in the business side of it. That's why we filed it the way we filed it.
Because you, you can put it here still through forty B, but without forty B, I, I don't, I, I didn't, if it's in RA, no, I stand corrected. I found it right at the bottom of the page there now.
Yeah, so there was a residential, so there was a, there was a difference between whether we came under the business side of it, or whether we came under the residential side of it?
Yeah, and I, I was looking for it before, and I couldn't find it, and I kept reading it, and now I, I do see it in the RA now that I'm relooking, so I'm happy about that.
Do you know the percentage of fifty-five?
Because when, when you said it, you said he, Jim told you, you fell into the Business Village, and I'm thinking, I, I hear you saying that, and that's what I was looking, and it's allowed there, but I didn't see it in the RA, and it is allowed there by special permit as well. So again, I think the special permit part of it, and again, we're gonna let everybody speak and whatnot, but I don't think it's an issue. I mean, we, we, we want that. I think the issues are gonna be more the, the tightness of the lots and the variances, but not the special permit.
I know there's a percentage of fifty-five, I don't think Christian is anywhere close to where it was supposed to be.
Well, that, that's to do with forty B, though. This, this is actually allowed, we don't, he doesn't have to go through forty B, it's allowed through a special permit in the residential district, as I said. And I was, I was looking for it earlier, I couldn't find it, but it's clear as day, it's right there, like the last thing in the list. Bring it right up here, so everybody's aware. RA district, the last pretty much thing on the page down the bottom, multifamily housing for elderly fifty-five and older is allowed under national law, chapter forty B. Or, no, or, 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 special permit, or, so we're good. Yeah, we're good. I don't know, you, I, I don't know if you wanna take these up individually, or, or let people talk, but I think we should allow you to talk a little bit more on the maximum floor area ratio, impervious surface and some of that stuff, because that's really the only issue I have with it, is that it's a little, it's a little tight what you're doing here. I'm looking at your, your driveways being twenty feet off the street, literally meaning the bumpers of the cars are gonna be on the street, and our towns trucks driving down are gonna be plowing right into these cars, and I got a little issue with that. I'd love to see this there, I don't know if there's a way to push them a little tighter and get a little more room off the street, a little more off the, the lines or whatnot.
Okay, so we're gonna build these the way that's shown on the plan to meet all, all the, the regulations that we need to meet as far as setbacks go and so forth and so on. The driveways, we're asking for a waiver on the driveways for the impervious material versus pervious versus impervious, because that way we meet, and, and we're gonna get the drainage to meet all the, the drainage criteria that we need to meet to cover, to cover these lots, roof lines and so forth and so on, that are taking up the area. So that's all been calculated, it's all gonna work, but we just, we had to start with this option for us.
Not, not true, because you're way over your maximum floor area. You, you shouldn't be building on half of this, building on all of it.
That's what we're asking for the waiver for, but we are gonna meet the, we are gonna meet the, the drainage requirements that are needed to, to put this type of roof lines over, over this property.
Like, like I said, I just, from my perspective, the only issue I have is with the, the coverage, the how much of the lot you're covering, and really minimizing parking and not getting anything off the street anywhere. These cars are literally gonna be bumpers on the street, the way it's designed. And that's because, you know, you're covering the entire lot with homes.
Well, I believe the, the requirement is two, two parking spaces per, per dwelling is what the requirement is in the town, which we meet that through, through this plan. I, I think two parking spaces is more than sufficient for a single-family over-fifty-five housing, I really do, and I don't think there's, I, I, I mean, I'm in the driveway business, and twenty feet is not really, not, not normal for an average, an average car. I mean, you're gonna have-
You know I'm in the building business too, we never build a garage under twenty-two feet, 'cause the cars are there now.
Yeah, width-wise, width-wise, you're talking about, yeah.
Length, length, twenty-two feet.
Right.
But, minimal. And, and we're only showing twenty from the street to your, the end of your driveway, so like I'm saying, the bumpers are gonna be at the street.
Are these, so are these dwellings allowed to get closer to each other, or are they meeting a certain footage you could twine, like if it was pushing?
That's all I'm asking.
Right, yeah.
So push it, everything a little more away from the street.
I'm, I'm sure we can, I'll have to just get the engineer to, to see what we can put there. I don't see a problem with that at all. Even if I had to make the houses a little bit smaller, I'm just trying to give the, you know, it's an eight-hundred square foot, um, one-level, one-level house, right? I don't know the exact square footage, it's on the back of that plan that you have, it should show the, it should show the square footage of the house.
Uh, twenty-eight by forty, so do the math.
Well, two, two thousand and thirty-five is supposed to be all electric cars, so those are five feet long.
Anyways, um-
Put plugs on each-
I don't know, that was my only concern, is that it seemed a little tight with the parking and stuff, but I will ask now, anyone, any abuddies wanna speak, anybody from the public wanna speak? Whoever, one at a time, come on up, mistake who you are, please.
My name's Jeff Brayley, I live at thirty-one Hayes Street. Um, I don't know if any of you guys have been in that neighborhood, uh, right over here. Hayes Street is a dead-end street, it's cut off in the middle. We've actually driven by, me and my wife, and actually checked out that lot before we even came here, just to see how big it was. And that is a tiny lot to try, be trying to squeeze five homes. I don't care how small the homes are. The extra traffic, I'm concerned about Hayes Street itself. The only way, I haven't seen any placements of where things are gonna go, but looking at it, it looks like there's gonna be, if I had to guess, two houses facing towards Cleveland, maybe three on the Hayes Street side, which would possibly mean that they're gonna blow out all the woods at the end of Hayes Street. And another concern of mine is, at that point, are they gonna open up Hayes Street?
What do you mean, open it up to what?
Uh, it's a dead-end street in the middle-
Right.
Uh, making a pass-through, because I am completely against that.
There is, um, so you're Mr. Resendes?
I'm Mr. Brayley.
Brayley.
I live at thirty-one Hayes.
Okay.
I'm just on the other, other end of that dead-end, I'm the last house coming in from the opposite side on Hayes Street, which that lot is across the street from my backyard.
Who owns that property, then, that would allow it to be-
Well, the town owns the property at the end of the street that goes straight through.
Right.
But I'm just wondering, once these all go in, you know, is, is it gonna be a possibility that it's gonna be opened up?
Ask you, Rob, if you know where Cleveland Street is, I don't know where Cleveland Street is.
What he, what he's talking about is Hayes Street, as you already put that, is it gonna connect to the other side of Hayes?
How far up is the house gonna come to?
Just up to my property line, which is the fenced-in area, it's not gonna go beyond that fenced-in area that's there, that's, there's another piece of property between, between me and-
Mrs. Peach owns that piece of property, that is but his.
Yeah.
That's the wooded area.
Yeah.
That, that's on-
And that's, and that's a swampy area, too.
Yeah.
It's settled down, it gets all swamp, when it rains, it pours, it's always flooded.
Yeah, I'm not gonna approach on that at all, I have no intentions on opening up Hayes Street, or, they're gonna be just single-family houses with, with driveways to each house, so the, the one, the single-family homes will have one or two cars ops that are gonna go to the, to the place, a one-bedroom house, or, uh, it's a two-bedroom, because it's a, there's a guest room there, a office, but-
I would still say it's way too many houses gonna be going on that very small lot.
There's two on, on one street.
Yeah.
You can look at a picture of it, if you haven't.
I have not, thank you.
This is where you come in from coming, is very-
Right, my house is right, this is exactly what I was thinking. This is all-
Yes, where do you live exactly?
I live right here. This is, my house goes from here to here, right, right on the dead-end, yes, across the street.
Is that, how long's that house been there?
Uh, it's about one ninety-two.
All right, I was curious.
It's been there a long, long time.
And then years of war.
Um, but like I say, right here, where they're showing my property, this is all-
So there's a new house, there's a new house next to you.
Just what's put there.
So, right here-
There's a new house over here?
There's a new house here, then there's a house that was there at the end of Compton Park Street, and then there's a new one. I'm right on the other side of here. Like I said, I do write, my property probably comes down to about here, on this side of the street.
How long have you been there?
Um, three years.
Okay.
I gotta address everybody with that address, and I wanna give everybody a turn.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Frank Knox, I own the building on Hayes Street and Garfield Street, that's right up into the property there, and I have some, some questions on it. Are those houses having full foundations?
No, slab ones.
Slab one, great.
Slabs, yeah.
Okay, um, are you gonna have a homeowners association there?
I'm gonna own them all, so I'm gonna-
That's, is there gonna be a homeowners association, because, I mean, what I'm concerned with is there's no room there for anything else. So you're gonna cut the grass, you're gonna rake the leaves, you're gonna take care of everything, and that's guaranteed for how long?
As long as I own it.
Okay, so once you sell it, then what do I do?
Well, I can, I can create a, we can create whatever we want to see created.
I mean, 'cause the thing is, you, you're putting in two-bedroom homes there, correct?
Yeah.
Fifty-five and over, like, I'm over fifty-five, my kids are thirty-one and twenty-eight years old, and they both drive. So there's, if one of them lived with me and my wife, and we each had a car, and there's a third car, where does that third car go?
The dwelling fifty-five and older is only allowed for two occupants.
Well, why, why build a two-bedroom then?
I, I believe they're building-
Why can't we shrink these houses up and push everything further into the center? Because, in all honesty, the bedrooms for, for two of those dwellings are twelve feet off my property line where I park all my diesel pickup trucks, which I have the right to park there, which I have the right to start, 'cause I have those stipulations on my business. So once we put fifty-five and over community there, and I'm starting a diesel pickup truck at five forty-five in the morning, 'cause if you have diesel trucks, you know what I'm talking about, they're not the quietest things in the world, I'm gonna have people chirping in my ear, calling the police department, saying, "Hey, this guy's starting his trucks, and I'm trying to sleep." And this is just, and I'm gonna say, "Well, I'm sorry, but I'm running a business. You don't like it, move." Because that's what's gonna end up happening, this is gonna end up into a huge fight, and as it is, as most of you people know, if you've ever gone to Captain's Place on a Friday night, Saturday night, whatever, there's no parking anywhere on that road, never mind getting a fire truck up that road. I think this is a huge, huge mistake. The Senate District calls for one dwelling on a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, we're putting five dwellings on a sixteen-thousand-square-foot lot, and that's really all I have to say. I think it's a horrible mistake if we let this go through.
I just wanna, uh, clarify what a housing for the elderly is. If we, if we do allow this, it's housing with an occupancy of each dwelling unit reserved for not more than two persons, one of whom must either be fifty-five years or older or handicapped. So I, I, um, I take it, Mr.-
I think a homeowners association could better police that than a single-own.
Well, I can say that, if I may speak, I own twenty properties, and I'll take you and every one of you through any one of my properties to see what my properties look like. I'm not, I'm not some pig. The, the stuff I build and the stuff I own is very well-maintained, hundred percent, I'll guarantee that. So whatever you guys, I don't know if, if that's something that has to be done through, through a, a, the zoning, um, appeals board here, we have to put that into writing, but, I mean, I'm the owner of the property, I'm, I'm, the people that rent from me are not gonna be the ones that are maintaining the property, so how do I build a, a homeowners association if I'm the sole owner of the property? But I can guarantee you that the place will be manicured to, to the, to the nines, that I can tell you.
I, I agree with you, I know what you keep up, but my, my concern does lie with what Mr. Knox is saying about, how about your tenants living next door to all this business?
How about the fact that I've owned my property as long as he's owned his, what's, what's, what's my concern about him running, working his business the way it is? He's, he's able to do-
I'm in a commercial district.
Okay, and I'm in a residential district, so I, and I, and I fall under, I fall under something that you guys have put into place here, so why am I the bad guy for that? Okay, unfortunately, he bought his business there, and I have a piece of property that I can have a residential dwelling on, I'm sorry about that.
Are the driveways gonna be on Garfield or Hayes Street?
There will be driveways on both sides, still be, uh-
You cannot get cars in and out of Garfield Street that close, you know, you know Garfield Street. We cannot get out of that corner, you're coming from Main Street, if you're going towards the north end, trying to Garfield, you can't. They're unloading trailers, they, they've got cars on either side, there's cars coming out of Captain's Place parking lot, you put five more cars or ten more, if there's two cars per house, you cannot put driveways on Garfield Street. I invite anyone to come down that street in the evening, and you can't get out, because there's cars parked on both sides of the streets. Now, if you wanna change the parking, get people away from the corners, maybe you can do that, but it's a dangerous corner, they've taken down the sign that says no parking from here to the corner, then they allowed a fifteen-minute parking time, that's gone. So people getting out of Garfield, you've gotta go one street above or below to put driveways there, it's horrible.
I don't disagree that it's-
The car bumpers, it's, it gets icy there, because you have drainage there, and the corner freezes, and you slide right through that intersection of Garfield and Main Street, you slide through. It's a dangerous corner in the winter.
I don't disagree, this, this doesn't affect the corner there, as I've already stated.
No, I'm saying, though, it's an icy, icy street in the winter.
Over three hundred feet from the corner, and what they're proposing is just, you know, cars right, right on the street, so basically, once their property has a driveway that's approved by the building department and-
So are you talking the property that Captain's Place now uses as a parking space next to Mr. Knox's building? Is that the property you're talking about?
That's part of it, yes. So the, can I say something?
Sure.
So I think that if you have a piece of property there, you're entitled to a driveway or two squats.
Right.
I think we all know the real trouble with all the parking there, and that's a couple of local businesses, that just for the nature of the beast, whether it's the, the Legion across the way there, or, or Captain's, or whatever. So I mean, that's an issue that is probably because of the overflow, obviously, of them, but if you own a property there, you do have a right to a driveway spot or two, in this case, so that's just my-
But you have to have five houses and make it five properties, instead of maybe four, where it would be a little more doable.
Correct, I think what we're, what we're doing is deciding whether or not a sixteen-thousand square foot lot, which, again, we would, I'll, I'll go back to, um, and I know you voted for it there as well, but a sixteen-thousand-square-foot lot on the other end of town, we didn't wanna put one dwelling, uh, smaller than this, so it's, uh, it is allowed, whereas that's not, this, you know, the special permit allows for the housing there, but it needs to fit the neighborhood-
This, you know, the special permit allows for the housing there, but it needs to fit the neighborhood and fit in and have enough so everybody can work it as well, so that's what we had to say.
Then, the ambulance goes to that, across the street from Mrs. Peters' property, they go there often. There's always an ambulance in there. And if this car's parked on both sides, like on a weekend where the Captain's Place is doing good business, that ambulance is gonna have a hell of a time to get in there.
Not on the ambulance, but the fire department.
Fire department.
Everybody can talk, but you have to come up pleasing and state who you are and state your case, we can't just have people scream out there.
My first question is this, is elderly housing considered...
You need to just stay here.
George Roy, thirty-four Hayes Street.
Thank you.
Is elderly housing considered low-income housing?
It is not.
It is not? What category is it in then?
Elderly fifty-five and older or handicapped.
A separate category?
Correct.
I see. Well, I know that there's been, I guess you could say, different science research done throughout the country, many, many times. One is Stanford University, and they claimed that elderly housing and low-income housing placed in a medium-income neighborhood, or I wanna say a wealthier neighborhood, lowers property taxes.
Low taxes?
Lowers, lowers their values. That's what I meant, they lower their values, okay? And it's been, it's well-known throughout the country, and Stanford University, one of the major universities in the country, was a nationwide report, and they set it up. And, but it also raises property values if you put it in a low, a poorer neighborhood, a very poor neighborhood, it raises property values, it's the opposite effect. Our neighborhood is medium-income, a little wealthier neighborhood. And I, you know, it's gonna hurt every one of us with our property values. I just don't think it's right. And it's all my personal thing too.
If, if, if you're worried about them going down, I think I would disagree. I don't know if you've looked at what's proposed, you're not talking about low-income at all. Rob, can you tell me what a unit would rent for?
I'm hoping in the two thousand dollar range, twenty-two hundred bucks.
What he's proposing isn't my opinion. They're, they're twelve hundred square foot dwellings for two people.
I'm gonna make one other comment. I lived in New Bedford, okay? Before I became, before I moved to, two thousand and seven to a Christian, I lived in a section of New Bedford that was wealthier homes, and two blocks away from us they built an elderly housing, multi-story, okay? It lasted for eight to ten years, then all of a sudden elderly were dying, and they couldn't get any of the residents to move in. So it changed from elderly housing to any Tom, Dick, and Harry could move in, okay? Within two years, within two years, we started to have break-ins in the neighborhood. Now, I'm not saying that's gonna happen here, but it's a possibility it could, okay? It's a possibility it could. I, you know, and I had to get the police in New Bedford, which I was close to, I was a fire captain, I called them up. They were controlling the neighborhood, they have a lot more than you were, but it caused problems for the whole neighborhood, you know what I mean? Elderly housing can be changed to anything after a period of time. I don't care who it is, it can be changed. I don't know if you people have the right to change it, or somebody else controls it, but it can be changed. And all I'm saying is that a lot of things can happen, and I think all of us should consider it, you know what I mean? That's all I gotta say. I'm against it.
Period. Anybody else?
I have one more question, please. Kinda goes with what he was just saying. You got that special permit, that special permit is for fifty-five plus?
Correct.
Okay. Saying to, here from now, this gentleman decides to sell the homes, okay? Does that permit still stay in effect, and does it still have to be fifty-five housing? Or does that go away, and it can be whoever?
I'm not a lawyer, but the special permit stipulates that it's fifty-five and older.
So that transfers the ownership of the home?
One of the occupants, no, it has nothing to do with ownership. He's, you know, I don't think he's fifty-five yet, pretty close though. But it's, it has nothing to do with the owners of the building, the occupants of each unit. One of them has to be fifty-five and older, and they can only be two. That's the only stipulation for our bylaw.
So you couldn't change it until you would come back in front of the board again, and you would have to prove?
And you couldn't change it unless you were changing it to something else that was allowed, and it, there's nothing else?
And it probably wouldn't work at all, because it's not fifty-five anymore.
Thank you.
Again, my only issue is the congestion. I, I don't have an issue with fifty-five and older, I don't have an issue with the proposed drawings for the homes. I think they will fit in the neighborhood nicely. I, I do think it's a little much for the property, but that's just my opinion. It's, it is a sixteen thousand square foot lot, and we're looking at five units, twenty-eight by forty. So...
I have a question. Are you, have you ever considered reducing the number of dwellings, or is the project not financially viable?
Yeah, I think we need to keep it at five to make it, make it worth, worth its while, you know? I mean, I just built four houses in Fairhaven on, on, in North Fairhaven, on five thousand square foot lot, single-family, twenty feet off the, off the, off the street. So if the cars fit, guy's got a, guy's got a GMC pickup truck. And twenty, twenty-two hundred square foot houses, I built four of them, and you guys are welcome to go by and see the finished product and what... Five thousand square foot each? Each zone. Four on twenty thousand square foot? But I got twenty-two hundred square feet homes, I mean, this is, this is a whole different, it's a whole different animal here. It's not a one-level, one-family, single-family, eight-hundred-plus-square-foot layout.
What are these people gonna have for storage for, you know, lawn tools or anything?
There's gonna be no lawn tools.
Christmas trees, where are they gonna put any of that stuff?
It's gonna have to stay, it's gonna have to stay within their compound inside the house. There's gonna be a utility room.
So ba, so basically, their, their unit's gonna be congested to the size that it is, so that you can fit as many houses on that property as you possibly can, is that basically correct? Because there'll be no storage for anybody there.
Well, it's, it's like any other rental house, when you rent an apartment, you only have the apartment to, to put your belongings in.
Yeah, but we're not renting apartments in the city though, we're, we're, we're talking in Cushinget.
I'm talking for any apartment, Fairhaven, or Cushinget, Dommett, Mattoise. You rent an apartment, you rent an apartment, you don't have any other storage in the facility, other than what your compound, what your, your living space is.
If there was enough space on that lot, we wouldn't be here right now. There's not enough space on that lot.
Are we asking for just the one variance, or is there multiple variances?
I will read the variances, so everybody knows what will be required. First of all, the proposed fifty-five and older, even if they met all the requirements, needs a special permit, needs to be allowed, which, again, I don't think anybody's anti that. But when you get into that, that does take away, you know, as you said earlier, anybody else is only allowed one home this size on this, and we're looking to do five. Because it's fifty-five and older, we can grant more. But again, whether the board thinks three is enough, or five is okay, or whatever, that's, that's up to the board. But he is looking for a couple of variances that are gonna be required to do them the way that it is allowed. And the maximum floor area ratio is one. And, again, because we don't have a, an application for a building permit, we don't really know, we don't really know what the maximum allowed is for this lot, or what is proposed. So that may be a stipulation that the board wants to take a look at. Because it does go by square footage, and when there's an application turned into the building department, he'll come back with us and give us the ratio, and what we're allowing and what we're not. Is it, you're looking for fifteen percent more than the twenty percent allowed? Is that where you're at, so you'd be covering thirty-five percent? I believe so, I don't... I do see on the application, in the next line down, it says fifteen percent over the twenty percent maximum allowable. Is that for the maximum floor area ratio? Because if we voted on that, I guess that's what we would be allowing, is the fifteen percent that you're asking for. Okay, yes. The way I read the application, we're allowed to let him cover twenty percent of the property, and he's looking for thirty-five. The next is the surfacing, the maximum pervious surfrage, the coverage. And he's looking for fifteen percent over the maximum allowable. And then the parking and loading requirements, I believe what it says is that the, the bylaw states that the parking needs to be pervious surface, and in order to put it in, you need it to be impervious surface in order to meet even the fifteen percent.
Correct.
So, again, that, that's right from the start, that's been my whole kinda issue with it. Not that it's faulty, not that it's elderly housing, not that there's a little bit more than one dwelling there, but that we are covering a lot of the law. So...
How many, across the street that they're talking about there, what is that across the street from me on Gar?
That's actually owned by the Christian Housing Authority. It's housing, just like any other housing authority that can allow for fifty-five and older, disabled, any of this other stuff. That's actually, I mean, it's a group home. So the Housing Authority leases the entire building to one management company, who in turn takes in the people that they need to service by them, so. You have a question on that?
Yes. I live in the Garfield Street, and my property go to Hayes Street. And the closest street, it's a halfway house, if you don't know.
That's what they're asking me about right now, the Christian Housing Authority owns and manages, or not really manages, but leases it up.
Most of the time, the ambulances go there, the people work there, they're parking the street. So ambulances have to park double. If we wanna get out from my parking space, we can go on the right, we have to wait to leave. Because no place, because both sides can't park it, so we have to go opposite way. So make not too good to us.
I just, thank, thank you. One more person stating that the area is already over-congested.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Again, just so the board knows, you, you can vote to approve a special permit for fifty-five and older. That's one, that's one, and I don't know if everybody read the ruling from Copeland and Page. They specifically wanted separate votes on this, so that if he moves forward in any direction, again, the first vote would be to allow a special permit for the use, but then each individual variance should be voted on as well, so. I, our town clerk felt the need to make sure we didn't make any mistakes on it, where it's new, so she had a town council just give us a little briefing on how we should move forward with it. So, once again, we've heard from the public, we have a very congested area. We're looking at a sixteen thousand square foot lot, adding five two-bedroom dwellings, ten parking spots. And we would also, to allow it to be built as proposed, we do need to have three variances to cover the... Additional...
Three separate votes, basically.
Three, three separate votes after a special permit vote.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this... Please. So, I'm hearing the congestion, but we're providing parking spaces for each one of these dwellings that we're putting there. We're not adding cars to the street, we're taking them off the street here, I just wanna make that clear, that we're not trying to add more cars to the road.
And, and I know you have the right to do so, but you are taking away street parking.
But families have guests.
There's not one, there's not one curb line on, on either one of those streets. There's not one piece of curb in there that tells you that that's not, that's a wide-open, driveway opening on both sides of the road. So I have to say that, I beg to differ with that one, because if there was a curb in there, then we'd be taking away parking on the street. If that's not the case.
What about when it comes Christmas time, they have company that comes over? They're gonna be parking on the street?
Or anytime.
Or anytime.
They'll all be using my parking lot, probably. Like Captain's Place does, yeah.
Do you have anything to, to help us make a decision here?
Can I say one thing?
Or have any questions for, about us or applicants, I'm sorry, Dan.
So that lot should be sixty-four thousand square foot bigger for it to put five houses on it, right? Because it's supposed to be sixteen thousand per dwelling, you're saying?
No, ten, ten.
Ten thousand per dwelling?
It's a village.
Oh, no, it's under a different, it's under a different zone.
On its own.
Yeah, it, really, the apples and oranges.
Yep, yep, I understand.
Where, if we were talking about a single-family dwelling, then we want one per ten thousand in that area, correct?
Alright.
But we're not talking about that, we're talking about a, more of a community where he's gonna maintain the entire place and have ten residents in and out. And if I may, I mean, I have no, I have no issue with leaving the fence, that, not sure if the fence is on my property, our property.
Neither mine.
We haven't really surveyed that, so I'll get it surveyed. But I have no issues with leaving that fence there, if it's where it is, and I have no problem with putting a nice set of hedges down on our side of the fence to give you, to give you some more...
My only, my only concern, my only concern, and I'm gonna totally honestly, I don't know if you're putting central air in these units, what you're doing, but when my diesel trucks are starting at five forty-five in the morning,
Yeah.
And they call in the cops, and the cops come, and I tell the cops, "Yeah, you can go home now because I'm all done talking now."
Right.
That's the way it's gonna be.
Now, this is gonna be central air conditioning, there's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be, it's really gonna be landscaped to the nines, it's gonna be maintained every, every week, it's gonna be powdering the way that... No?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm just leading my case, and anybody that wants to, welcome to come, give me a call, and I'll walk you around any one of my properties.
I think three units would be more than plenty there.
I'm gonna say to the board, if there was three units there, if, you know, you got the unit here, if we put one here and one here, and the six cars, really, the variances go away. All we gotta do is give them a special permit for the fifty-five and older, and I think it would much better fit on the law, but just my opinion.
Yep.
And get along with the neighbors much better too.
So would, so if you got rid of this one and pushed this one over to the middle a little bit, could do...
Yeah, I don't care whether he did, you know, one, one and one, or a double and one.
He said it needs five buildings to make it worth its while though.
That's, that's up to you.
It's more feasible if they did two and two.
The reason we put the third, the third building, where we put the third building was because we separated for the fire suppression. And that was what, you know what I mean? Because if we put the three buildings together, then we have to put the fire suppression through it.
Yep.
So we went with the third building to be separated from the two on that one street. So if we were to go with four buildings, I don't know off the top of my head what the, what the coverage would be, but I mean, I still think, three is just not, it's not, it's just not feasible for three, just definitely not. For the four lots gave me...
For the four lots gave me, four lots may give me where I don't need, I don't need the lot coverage.
I, I would say if you scrap the single building, you probably don't need the variances. You only need the special permit for the house.
So how do we go about that? Do we continue this, in order to do that, or do we take a vote on the four buildings the way it is?
We can make a motion to continue, if you have further information.
If, if the petitioner asks for a continuance, it's no problem with us.
Well, can I, can I just take a general poll? If we were to cut back to four tonight, could we proceed with this, with the four lots?
I, I think I, I just need a little math to know that there's no variances allowed at-
But if there is a variant, let, let, let's vote on it as if there is a variance. You know it's going to go from fifteen percent over the twenty percent, it's going to only decrease from there. But if we were to vote on that tonight, with just knowing that we need those three variances that we've asked for, and I go with four lots, and I push them whichever way, the neighbors, if he's concerned about the house, we push the house further down, away from Knox on that, on that one street?
Or towards the, the back ends.
Right.
Maybe the squeezed a little bit more, so leaves more room for that.
Frontage, yeah.
Well, now we can put the parking spots on the side of the, of the, we can put a parking, we can put the parking to the right side along, along his fence, and park to the other side of the other one. So now there won't be cars in front of the houses, and it'd probably make a better buffer for him, where he, he parked a car there, and then there's this commercial fence, and then there's this commercial building, so.
The building would look better, too, without the-
Driveways in the front, yeah. I mean, guys, I'm going to do it, it's going to be, you see the renderings, I'm not going to, I'm not going to cut it back from there. It's just, it's going to be, look like that when it's done. So I'm open to, to cut it back to the four lots, and I still, I'm sure we're still going to need some sort of variance there, but, I mean, what I'm doing there is going to, going to help enable it. I mean, it's nice that across the street from me finally built the house, and they cleaned that up. That was just a disaster on the other side of Hayes Street, Hayes or?
Yeah, Hayes.
Hayes, yeah. Where the guy had the landscape company or something over there, so.
That was a-
I'm going to take the chain-link fence down, that big commercial chain-link fence will come down, except the piece that separates us, and hopefully it's right on the property line, because other than that, him and I are going to have to talk about what we're going to do with that, if it's not, right? So, I don't want to see that come down if we don't have to, but the front will come down, and the rear will come down. When I say front, the front on Hayes, and the front, the front on, on, uh... And I'm open to putting, if you want me to put a curb line down on, on those two streets, I can put curbing down, so that we create parking on the street, except where the driveway's going to be. You know what I mean? So I can take care of that when I'm done. I can just put a Cape Cod burn down, down Hayes Street and Garfield, and then just leave the opening where the driveway's going to be. And now you've created some parking on that street that may help. I mean, I can't control the rest of the neighborhood, what's going on with the restaurants, and so forth and so on, but I can try to help relieve the problem.
I would be, personally, again, I'm not speaking for, on behalf of the board, I would be a lot more excited to vote in favor of your proposal, if we could continue it, and you could give me that drawing at the next meeting.
And when would that be?
Four, four, four to five weeks. Would be the third, the third of, the third Tuesday in November.
I agree with that. Okay. That's what we'll do, I'm going to ask for a continuance on the meeting.
Motion to grant a continuance.
Second.
We're going to go under a new plan, right?
I think if you could propose the four buildings, and, and then that way you could have the parking on the side where this fifth building is, and push everything back off of Garfield a little bit, so you had just a little bit more driveway there. Would really make you feel good about the project. I think, I think it would alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns, as you said, showing the additional parking you're actually creating on the street by adding. I know people park there already, but I understand what you're saying. Because there's no curbs, it's not necessarily granted.
Correct.
So, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to help alleviate that situation, and create some good buildings over there.
Okay.
Garfield, there's no parking on one whole side of the street, anyway.
It's supposed to be.
So how are you going to make parking on that side of the street, when there's no parking on that side of the street?
We have a motion in a second to continue this hearing until our next meeting, to be scheduled right now, which is, I can get you the day. The third Tuesday in November will be the fifteenth, so it's actually, it's four weeks away. And that will be at six-thirty, and you should be the first on our-
November.
Excuse me.
Well, how's that work? If you know, every time, do you determine?
I can change it, but then we might have somebody else who's got an issue as well, so.
What happens if I don't want to sell the property?
If you don't want to walk?
I don't want to sell my property.
You don't have to ask yourself that.
No, nobody's forcing you to do anything with your property, ma'am.
No. The houses were just above your property, the other two houses on Hayes Street will be close to your property.
We have the schedule, so we're going to schedule for the fifteenth of next month, and I hope we get a, we'll at least get a quote.
Can I get your phone number, Bob?
Yes.
Can we watch it to adjourn?
Second. We have a, we had a motion in a second to continue this meeting until the next, on the fifteenth, at six-thirty. I need a-
I'll be here.
An all-in favor? Aye, aye, aye. We are continuing until our next meeting. Thank you, yes. I'd like to thank everybody from Garfield and Hayes Street for coming in and giving us, you know, your feedback to help us determine what we should do there.
Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?